Good afternoon, Westbury family. I'm sorry, good evening, Westbury family. Welcome to the Board of Education Planning Meeting. Today is March the 14th. Trustee Pedro Quintanilla.
Present.
Trustee Michelle Wilson.
Present.
Trustee Dr. Pleas Dickerson.
Present.
Trustee Robin Bowden.
Present.
Trustee Rodney Keynes.
Present.
Vice President Floyd Ewing.
Present.
Board President Robert Troiano Jr.
Present.
Mr. President, we have a call in.
Thank you, District Clerk. I just want to start by apologizing. I'm getting a lot of feedback. Is this something that I should be doing? Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
And no feedback? Okay. Just want to apologize to everybody for the late start of the meeting. It's about 8:15 now. You know that typically our meetings start at 7:30. This evening, we got a little delayed because we had a meeting at 6 o'clock with parents from the middle school to talk about the implications of the fire that occurred in that building in the wee hours of Monday morning. Superintendent Chase will speak again about that during the superintendent's report section. But we apologize for the late start for this meeting. In addition to just starting late, we didn't make a transition of the microphone system, and that's what took so long. So before we actually go any further, I just want to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just before you sit down, please let's ask you to remain standing for a moment. This is the portion where we do a moment of silent meditation to reflect on, you know, possibly anything. But we had the passing of one of our school district employees this week by the name of Teresa Toussaint, and Dr. Chase is going to speak a little bit about her and her commitment to the school district.
Thank you, President Troiano. Last week, we were informed that food service employee Teresa Toussaint passed away, transitioned. Her daughter informed the school district of this late last week. Just so that you know, Ms. Toussaint worked at the high school. She started here in 2015. She worked at the high school and then transitioned to Park Avenue School, where she worked alongside her sister. We extend our condolences to the Toussaint family and the extended family, as well as her food service family here at Westbury School District. You know, while I didn't know her personally, I had a chance to chat with her colleagues in the kitchen at Park Avenue, and what they shared with me was that Ms. Toussaint enjoyed singing, enjoyed dancing spontaneously. She made them laugh, and she joked around, and that she was a really hard worker and dedicated to making sure that the students at Park Avenue had a nutritious meal. I am certain that she will be missed at Park Avenue School, and of course, with her family. So I ask if we can just engage in a moment of silence in memory of our family member, Ms. Teresa Toussaint.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. As many of you long-term watchers of board meetings are aware, the Westbury School Board typically meets twice a month, on the second and third Tuesday of the month. The meeting on the second Tuesday of the month, which goes with this meeting, is known as a planning meeting, and is a meeting where we typically review the agenda that we will be voting on the following Tuesday. And we will do that as well in a few minutes by inviting questions from the board and from audience members. But this planning meeting will be a little bit different in that we are going to be voting on at least one item this evening, which is on the agenda that you've been given. And those of you who are not here watching livestream, you can find that agenda on our website. In addition to voting on that agenda item, we will also consider have the first reading of a policy amendment. We're required under state law to have two readings. We'll have the first reading tonight. The second reading will be next Tuesday, and following that, we will vote on adopting that policy amendment. We will go into executive session to discuss the item that's on your agenda, and that's a personnel item. We can legitimately go into executive session for that. We will also be in executive session to discuss an item of negotiation with a contractor. And when we come out of executive session, it is likely that we will vote on the item that you see on your agenda, 6A, but we may also vote on three other agenda items, potentially, when we come out of executive session. I just want to let you know about that. Before we hear the superintendent's report, and she will again, for those of you who are not part of the earlier meeting, talk about the middle school and the preparations we made for students going remote, I want to give an opportunity for two of our longtime residents of the Westbury School District who sat through part of the first meeting. I want to give them an opportunity to talk about a very exciting program they're working on as part of the Westbury United Methodist Church. And I'm giving this opportunity because it's a program that's geared toward high school students, and I think many of our high school students would benefit from hearing about this.
Good night, everyone. And I'm here on a very good note to talk to you about a free event.
Ms. Marshall, I just ask you to give your name and your address for residents. Okay, so, oh, is that working?
Okay, so my name is Carolyn Marshall, and as Mr. Troiano had said to you, I'm a longtime resident. I've been living in the area for about 40, maybe 41 years. And as I come into the auditorium, I remember when my kids were just on this stage performing and talking to Mr. Ewing, who now daughter is going to be performing here this week or next week. But I'm here on a very good note. We're having a free event at the Westbury United Methodist Church, and we are gearing it to all of the high schoolers, all those students that are at high school age, as well as some of the adjacent high schools. That would be encompassing Hempstead High School, as well as Uniondale, Freeport, Baldwin, Hicksville, as well as Farmingdale. And it's going to be an event where we are calling it, it's going to be our first youth empowerment forum. And it's going to consist of six motivational speakers, and they're going to be speaking on topics such as preparing for the future. You know, they're going to encourage our students to dream, dream big, and how to really carry on, carry that dream over. You know, what are the steps that you might want to do to carry that dream over, to make that dream happen? We're going to be on topics. We have a young man who just graduated with his master's in finances, and he's going to be talking about money management. There's so many of our young youth that gets into bad credit, and he's going to talk about the importance of keeping your credit and managing your money. And we're going to have somebody from Hofstra talking about college readiness. And they're going to be speaking on topics of how to get to that point that you want in life and doing it without encompassing so much debt, a financial debt. And then we're going to be talking about community leadership, which we hope that we're having Mr. Troiano to come, and we want to produce those little, I said to him lovingly, we want to produce little Robert Troianos, those persons that, you know, and I have been here for so long. And he has always been about really servicing the community. He's always been about community and the importance of voting and the importance of knowing what's going on in your community and being concerned about your community. So we need this with, you know, this kind of leadership and this kind of mentorship towards our young people. And then we have a young man who is right from Westbury, who speaks all over the country in all the colleges, and he's, his name is David Horn, and he goes from college to college, and he is doing a hip-hop thing where he's encouraging students. They do skits where they encourage students in how to, and he's going to be speaking on the importance of loving yourself and believing in yourself. So we're also going to have a comedian in between the speakers who's going to entertain the kids. And this is a professor from Hofstra who happens to be a comedian as well. So I'm hoping that all would come, all would, you know, with their parents. And I don't want to take up too much time because I promised just 90 seconds, the most, but that's going to be the gist of this event. We do have flyers. We gave out some. We're going to be sending some to the school and some of those other high schools that we spoke about. So I hope that we, as many students, you know, that we can motivate to come, that they will be here. And thank you for your time.
So thank you for sharing that, and I hope that our students will definitely take advantage of that opportunity. So there's a protocol for distributing flyers in the district, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't waste time in sending it to the schools and they only for them to send it back to me. So if you send it to my assistant, Christine Giordano, oh, so she told you already? Yeah. Christine gives it to me, I put okay, TDC, and then the schools will know to send it out. So if you can send it to Christine, that would be amazing.
Thank you.
Oh, it's my pleasure.
So if, just in case people are not moved by the idea of coming to hear Robert Troiano speak, I just want to note that Seal Labino will be there as well, and people may be much more interested in that. And so you may also, I know you told me earlier, Carolyn, that you are going to work through the Hicksville United Methodist Church. And if you're trying to engage the Hicksville high school community, you might also want to reach out to the principal, who is Mr. Ray Williams, who is from Westbury and used to actually work here, and I'm sure he'd be happy to support this.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on now, and, you know, the price of having me able to speak is nothing to do with to sit through the rest of this meeting, but you're welcome to stay if you like to. And you're welcome to go if you'd like to also. Very good. So it's now turn over to Dr. Chase to talk a bit about, to just talk about her superintendent's report.
Greetings again, community. I believe someone put in the chat asking a question if this meeting is attached to the 6:00 p.m. meeting, and Mr. Sanchez, it is not. I understand that for the 6 o'clock meeting, there were some people who were delayed in getting into the virtual space. What we're going to do is we're going to send the entire meeting to the middle school family, the middle school community, so that anyone who missed a portion of the meeting will be able to see it. So we'll do that first thing in the morning.
But Mrs. Sanchez, during the next section of this meeting, we do invite comments or questions from the public and about anything affecting the school district. So if you have a new question, you would be able to ask that question then.
Of course. Thank you. So as everyone probably knows by now, we had a fire at the middle school early Monday morning, I believe around 3:30 in the morning. Six fire departments responded, over 50 firefighters were on site to address the fire that took place in the basement of the school. Well, as we know, you know, we love our superhero firefighters, but the one thing I do know about firefighters, they will get to the fire by any means necessary, and sometimes they do leave a trail of damage. And of course, we appreciate them, but they do what they have to do, and that means breaking down walls to see if there's flames someplace else. They do a fantastic job. As much as we want to say to them, no, go in through that door, they don't. So that left us with a cleanup job, obviously, for their fantastic work, for their heroic work, should I say. And that cleanup job, that cleanup job includes cleaning up soot that's left behind, addressing smoke and water damage. As a result of those things, we lost power at the school, and the school is no longer a healthy and a safe environment for educating students. So we transitioned immediately to remote learning on Monday. We informed our community, we informed our families of the remote learning. Our facilities department, our team here, have been on the site with Belfour in terms of the cleanup process, and the process is underway, and it's going well. I believe it was reported earlier at the 6 o'clock meeting that there are 50-plus employees who are on site cleaning up double shifts, so they are working very hard. We don't know when we're going to reopen school for in-person instruction, but what we do know is that this week, our students will not be in school for in-person instruction. And what I share with the families is that I will communicate with them on a regular basis where we are in terms of reopening school. Now, here's what we know. We know that many of our students, you know, come to rely on school to provide meals. And so we have made provisions to provide meals to our beautiful middle school scholars thanks to our transportation department and our food service provider, Aramark. Here's what we did. Once the buses dropped the children off in the morning, we loaded those buses with lunches and breakfast, and we went into the community to deliver them to the students, to our scholars. We also set up pickup stations at each of our elementary schools, as well as the memorial library, and that will be done from 10 o'clock until 1:00. Today's meeting with the families and today's meeting with the staff a little bit earlier helped us to really see what works in terms of the meal distribution, and we may need to modify that in the coming days, and we will do so. What also came from this meeting is that there are some of our scholars who may not necessarily be able to get the meals because they're in class when the bus arrives. So we need to be able to set up alternative ways in which families can access the meals during this time. And so we had quite a few volunteers from the middle school, from PTA to parents to even teachers, to volunteer to help distribute meals in the evenings, and so we will be deploying that hopefully in the coming days. So the question is, what's on everyone's mind, what's at the top of mind is, when will we open school? As I said, we don't know. But we do know that much work is being done to get our schools open, to ensure that our schools open safely and that it is a healthy environment. We are currently, what we have today, taken air samples for air quality. We will take samples once the work is done. We'll also have a small walk-through made up of teachers and staff with some of our parents and maybe even our scholars, our board members and our administrators, to make sure that the school is in top shape for our scholars. That's where we are right now. We don't know the source of the fire, but what we do know that it took place in the basement, and we do know that we've lost some technology equipment and some books and things that we need. And so we will be, in the coming days, talking about, of course, replenishing what was lost. Here's where we're thankful. We're thankful for a lot of things. One we're thankful, no one was in the building during the time of the fire. No one was in the building. We're also thankful for the custodians and the security team, the firefighters, Mr. Keynes, who was out there, Ms. Bowden's son, all of the emergency team members who were there for us. We're thankful for the many community members who've reached out and asked, how can we help? So it really does speak to the Westbury Union Free School District, and as trustee Bowden always says, Westbury love is real love. They are definitely demonstrating that. And so please, you know, if you are a middle school family member and if you're part of the middle school community, we will continue to communicate with you on updates. The one thing I will encourage, if your phone number or email address has been changed a couple of weeks ago or what have you, please make sure you reach out to Ms. Crawford, Dr. Baralis, or Dr. Thiel to share your updated information so that we can remain in close communication with you. It's important that you get our messages. I understand that some of the translations were a bit faulty. Our technology department is addressing that. It is important that we get messages out, and the languages that are represented at the high school, I mean, at the middle school, excuse me, from Mandarin Chinese to Urdu to Spanish, Haitian Creole, and even Vietnamese. So the language of choice, you know, it is important that you get the information in that language so that you have a full understanding. Should you have any questions about the status of the middle school, Chromebook distributions? I know that there are individuals who still need Chromebooks, very small amount. We did do a massive Chromebook distribution at the beginning of the year, which allowed us to quickly transition into remote. We were ready in a matter of two hours, and scholars were on the line. But we understand there were some people whose Chromebooks were turned in because they need to be repaired, or they were in the midst of exchanging Chromebooks. So Ms. Crawford and the technology team will be sending information out in terms of trading in your Chromebook so that you can access the learning. So families, we ask that you continue to stay tuned. We are going to continue to work hard, and we will continue to communicate any updates about our middle school. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. And let me just, on behalf of the board, thank the administration for its responsiveness to this, let me call it a crisis, and also crisis management. Communication is key in that, and the superintendent and his team have been really moving forward very quickly with communication to our parents. And the meeting at 6 o'clock tonight is a demonstration of that, is having a special meeting for parents to be both in person and to listen into livestream, to understand exactly what happened and what the school district is doing to return the kids to scholars back to class as quickly as possible. It's very important, and you can see that the way parents reacted, that in what is a stressful situation, we didn't experience any anger. People are understanding that this is out of our control and that we are doing everything that we can to address it, and I have to say, we're doing it, the administration is doing it very well. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we will now open up the, I'll open up the floor to board members if they have any questions about tonight's agenda items, and that's, you know, the items to be voted on tonight, as I mentioned earlier. And there is, for the public, there was an agenda placed at the table at the entrance to the auditorium. And also, we're going to do both tonight, provide an opportunity to ask questions about the items that will be voted on next Tuesday. And again, that agenda was left at the table and has also been posted for the last several days on our website. So let me first start with any questions from board members about either tonight's voting agenda or next Tuesday's voting agenda.
Thank you very much. Godspeed.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
We appreciate you, the board.
Okay.
I just, with respect to the policy, I understand with the policy, we are looking to allow budget transfers not to exceed $30,000. Just wanted to know why just $30,000, why not up to $50,000? And that's just a question I have. Is that the magic number, or what is their reason?
So, you know, the, just so people that are watching and wondering what this policy is about, and we haven't read it yet, but we will, we will read that. This, currently, the board's policy is that any item, any time we have to transfer a budget monies from one account to another account, the administration has the authority, up to $10,000, to make that transfer on its own. Amounts greater than $10,000 need the board to authorize through a formal resolution at a board meeting. The administration has asked that we increase the amount from $10,000 to a higher number. And the reason for that is because the number of transfers above $10,000 was slowing down the process. So if there's an item, for example, that of $20,000 that has to be transferred from one account to another account, that transfer can't happen, and whatever the transfer is being done for can't happen either until the board approves it. And so we are moving it from $30,000, it could be $50,000. But the reason that $30,000 was chosen, or it could be $100,000, it could even be a million dollars. But the reason that $30,000 was chosen was to give the board some more control and not to have the administration potentially be making transfers that could be $45,000 without the board knowing about. Now, you might ask, why is there a need for budget transfers at all? Well, the reason for that is because sometimes, you know, budgeting is an estimate of what we're going to need to expend for a certain item that we have to purchase, a certain kind of expense. It's an estimate, and during the course of a year, it can be, it can be that we learn that the estimate is wrong, and that one account doesn't have enough in it, and another account has an excess. So, well, before we can actually, you know, for the account that has, doesn't have enough in it, but we find that our actual expenses exceed what was estimated at the beginning of the year, we want, we need the ability to put money into that account from another account so that we can, we can address that expenditure. It does not mean that we are spending more than what voters have approved. We are limited by state to only expending the amount that voters approved. But what it does allow for is for, within the amount that was approved by voters, for there to be transfers, you know, within the amount approved by voters. We're not spending more than you've authorized, but the way that we expected to spend it may have been, the estimates may, some of the estimates may have been wrong. This just enables us to meet those expenses without exceeding the budget amount. So that's a long-winded response to trustee Ewing's question.
Right. And also to answer your question, trustee Ewing, we thought $30,000 was a modest number. We are happy to entertain 50. I will tell you that because I think it will make it easier for us, but we just chose a modest number.
I'm just asking that in light of looking at budget transfers that go on.
That's right.
You know, in most cases, they are for, again, as Mr. Troiano stated, was to cover one section of the budget. They may not have been budgeted enough. Just streamlining the process would be, if we can do a little bit more, but I'm happy with 30. I just want to make sure that there was no particular reasoning, you know? Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from board members? Seeing none, we'll provide an opportunity for those that are with us in the audience today to come to the mic and ask any questions that they may have. And for those of you that are viewing online, there's also a chat room in the streamed version where you can write any questions you have there, and we'll try to address those as well. Does anybody in the audience have any questions?
Mr. President, I have one question on tonight's agenda. I think it's on page 23, the Health and Welfare Service Agreement with the West North Merrick School District.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you, and so I'm not sure if it's the mic or me. Can you turn the volume up?
Testing, testing.
It's better. Can we have this in the, included in the budget for?
Yeah, it actually is. And, you know, while you've mentioned that, Justice, I should have meant, I meant to mention this at the beginning. We had said at the February 28th meeting, where we had the presentation of draft one of the budget, that there would be another presentation tonight for draft two. There was a notice that went out earlier today, saying that that moved, that budget presentation has been moved to next Tuesday. So any of you that didn't get that message, that tuned in to hear the second presentation of the budget, that'll occur next Tuesday.
My question is about the Health and Welfare Service Agreement with the North Hempstead, North Merrick School District. What's that about?
Sure. So, Mr. McGibben, good evening. Whenever one of our students is placed out of district, or in another district, and they use the health services of that said district, we are billed. So I'll give you a case in point. If we have a student with disability who has been placed at North Merrick School District, and that student visits the nurse's office, or use the health facilities, we are billed for it. That's exactly what this is.
They, they pay us?
No, we have to pay them for the service, because our student is there.
And that's an annual agreement, or it comes up sporadically?
It does, depending on how often the student uses the nurse facility, or whatever health service that student might be using.
That they want to go to.
That is correct.
Okay. And this goes, another question on something, I think two agendas ago, about the collaborative educational program with the Long Island Children's Museum. What is that about?
So we have a fantastic partnership with the Long Island Children's Museum as part of our STEM initiative. And the Long Island Children's Museum is working with each of our elementary schools through our science specialists, under the leadership of our department chair, Patty Muller. Our students actually go to the museum, they participate hands-on STEM activities, and it's something that's been ongoing in our school district.
Age range?
Elementary. We have a grant with the Long Island Children's Museum. That grant was extended to grade three this year, and so we have our lower elementary school students.
And it's so long, it's every year, or it's?
It is. It is. And it appears, I'm not putting anything out there to the Long Island Children's Museum, but it appears that each year, they add on a grade. And so we're at grade three currently.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, Mr. President, you may recall that last year, our governor, Kathy Hochul, came up with the plan, her plan to deal with the affordable housing in Long Island, with the plan, the IDU, Individual Dwelling Unit Plan. You recall that?
The, I heard, I heard about the housing plan. What'd you say after that?
Individual dwelling units. That was a proposal from the governor's office to build housing in mainly Long Island, to satisfy the affordable housing requirement. You recall that?
Yes.
And it was pushed back by, there was a tremendous pushback from various towns and municipalities. Well, you know, the governor's attitude again, with this new proposal that will, well, she's almost, it would almost do away with zoning laws, in that what she's saying is that housing should be built on any property, as long as there's space that's in proximity to a train station. She's proposing that at least 50 houses every three years, units, be built. And of course, those of us that's following this, you would know the impact that this will have on school districts. I am surprised that I've not, I've not heard any, or seen any pushback from our school district, if this really becomes law. And it seems as if it's on the fast track for implementation. Have you any, the board has any thoughts on this, or how we intend to deal with this issue?
So I will, I will tell you that the North Hempstead Town Council, where you know I sit as well, which is a board that's composed of four Democrats and three Republicans, that we together wrote a letter to the governor in opposition to her proposal. I think, and I'm understanding that there may be plans in Albany to, to change her proposal, but it's really too early to speak about. But I am, I am, you know, I am not opposed to what she, what she's trying to achieve, which is to create-
You say you are not opposed to it?
I am, yes. I am not opposed to what it is she is trying to achieve, which is to create quality, affordable housing, so that Long Island does not experience the loss of its seniors and loss of its youth. I, the part of the proposal that I object to is that she's forcing it on local municipalities. She is taking away from the North Hempstead Town Council the ability to create its own zoning laws. So it's a matter of local control. Now, you may say, "Why am I, why," and I'm speaking for myself, and I'm not for anybody on this board. Why am, why am I not opposed? And I'm surprised that, that you are, to be honest with you. The, the density that the governor is proposing is actually less than the density that the Village of Westbury is actually actualizing around its train station. And so, that's not something that I've seen anybody, that very many people in Westbury oppose. It's something that we actually encourage. And in case of the school district, the increase in our, in our property tax revenue exceeds any expenses coming from having, potentially having more students. Now, most of the, most of the apartments that are being built today, as we speak, along the train station on Redwood Avenue, are not apartments that are of a size to attract families. So then, the school district winds up being a net beneficiary in terms of its finances.
Yes, they'll get millions of dollars.
We will get millions of dollars in additional taxes, and we will, that will not be fully offset by the cost of, of educating additional students.
But I'm sure you're also aware, Mr. President, that the SECR requirement has been disbanded. There have been no environmental impact studies on it, to see how it will impact surrounding and/or infrastructure and stuff like that. And that is my understanding, is that, that's why mayors from all over are vehemently opposed to this. You seem to have a different-
Right. So as I said, the, both Democrats and Republicans on the North Hempstead Town Council have, have written a letter to the governor, asking her to rethink this, because, because of local control. But please don't get caught up in what is political maneuvering on the part of many of those mayors. And if you see any, yes, if you go to, if you watch any of those rallies that you've seen around Nassau County, they come from one political party. And a lot of this is just geared toward November. What you've just talked about with respect to SECR, and there's also concerns, as Mr. Keynes may be aware, there's also concerns about the use of water use. And there are, there are provisions in the governor's proposal for that, that you won't hear those mayors talk about.
Sewerage systems?
I'm sorry?
Sewerage systems and water systems.
That, that's right. And what you don't hear those mayors talk about is the provisions that the governor is making to address that. But you're now taking us in an area that's well beyond the school district, and anything that we have to say about that. But in terms of the impact on the school district, the governor's proposal does not bring any more impact than the mayor's proposal. And, and we have to remember that. And the citizens of Westbury seem to be supporting what the mayor, as, as I do, what the mayor's doing in the, in the Village of Westbury.
Mr. President, has there been any discussion among school board members on this issue?
There has been discussion amongst the entire board about the mayor's proposal, because that's what impacts us. We have not had discussion about the governor's proposal, because that really does not impact us, because the mayor is doing what the governor proposed, and more. And I, you know, I'll let the mayor speak for his own proposal. I shouldn't, I shouldn't go too far, but-
Well, I'm glad you're having discussions around it, but as long as these discussions take into consideration, our quality of life, that will be impacted. And, and sometimes it's not just money that's being thrown at us.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm just going to ask you at the same time that you say that, that you keep in mind, that the mayor's, the villages, not the mayor, the villages, transit-oriented development, which is the fancy name for it, incorporates greater density than does the governor's proposal. And, and I support our mayor, our villages TOD.
Thank you, sir. But I hope, again, in your discussion, to you keep in mind our quality of life.
Okay. So, we will. And just, just one more point. When, when the first of the, the first of the developments were being reviewed by the IDA, this school board weighed in on that with the IDA, and we were able to get the, that developer to, to fund part of the cost of our tennis courts at the middle school. And also, by the way, the IDA did approve a pilot for them, but that pilot brings in more revenue than the property taxes from the current, what was the current property did. So it's a net benefit to the school district. And yes, we have weighed that, and, and we've seen some benefit from doing that.
Thank you, sir. And I hope that the community, the wider community, at some point will be brought in to, you know, go through, have robust discussions on this issue.
Well, I just, you know, again, you're bringing that to us. That's the governor's proposal. So anybody in the community that wants to, anybody in the community that wants to reach out to the governor, they can do that. The, the mayor of Westbury passed around a, a sample letter that community members could download and, and send off to the governor. So, but that's, you know, that's something for the, for people in this community to weigh in with the governor, not the school district. And if you want to encourage residents of Westbury to do that, you, I, we encourage you to do that, because I think that elected officials should always have, should always hear from, from their representatives.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Do we have any, anybody else here that would like to talk, have a question about tonight's agenda, or items affecting the school district? Seeing nobody, is there anybody in the chat room?
No.
Thank you. I'm going to do the first reading of the policy. There will be a second reading next Tuesday. We invite residents to speak about the policy before we vote Pending policy number 6150, rate budget transfers. This is the, again, the first reading. "The transfer of funds between and within functional unit appropriations of the general fund is commonly required during the school year. The superintendent of schools designates the assistant superintendent of finance and operations to make budget transfers within the same ST3 code, and the assistant superintendent of finance and operations must submit written monthly reports to the superintendent of schools regarding all budget transfers. The superintendent of schools, in accordance with the regulations of the Commission of Education, is authorized to make budget transfers between the, between line items, so long as the transfer for any one item does not exceed $30,000. All transfers between line item accounts in excess of $30,000 require prior, prior budget of education, I mean, require prior Board of Education approval. The superintendent will report all transfers to the Board of Education as any, as an information item on a monthly basis." Now that it's been read, I will provide an opportunity for people to ask questions now about that policy item. Is there anybody here that has a question? Anybody in the audience with us has a question? Is there anybody in the chat room that has a question?
No.
I am told there are, there is nobody in the audience has a question. I'm told there's nobody in the chat room that has a question. So I will now ask for a motion to go to executive session, discuss, to discuss an item of personnel, as well as negotiations with a vendor about work currently being worked on within the Westbury School District. I anticipate that we will be in executive session for at least an hour, possibly longer, no longer than 11 o'clock. When we come out of executive session, I expect that there will be several votes this evening on what is discussed in executive session. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
It's been moved by Dr. Dickerson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Quintanilla. Eyes, Trustee Quintanilla?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Quintanilla? I'm sorry, Trustee Dickerson, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Trustee Bowling?
Aye.
Trustee Keynes?
Aye.
Vice President Ewing?
Aye.
And I, Robert Triano, vote aye. Motion carries unanimously. We are now in executive session. session.
Okay, we are, we are back. We are back from executive session. Could I have a motion come out of executive session?
So moved.
Been moved by trustee bowling. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee.
Dickerson.
Dickerson. Eyes. Trustee Quintanilla?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Dickerson?
Aye.
Trustee Bowling?
Aye.
Trustee Keynes?
Aye.
Vice President Ewing?
Aye.
And I, Robert Triano, vote aye. Motion carries unanimously. We are out of executive session. As I said before we went into executive session, we may have some votes. One of those votes would be to hire an investigator. That's item 6A on our resolution. I also thought there might be a vote on a resolution related to negotiations with the contractors doing work on our campus. We will not need to have a vote on that negotiation, but we are going to have to vote, as I said, on item 6A. Do I have a motion to approve item 6A?
So moved.
Been moved by Vice President Ewing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Dickerson. Eyes. Trustee Quintanilla?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Dickerson?
Aye.
Trustee Bowling?
Aye.
Trustee Keynes?
Aye.
Vice President Ewing?
Aye.
And I, Robert Triano, vote aye. Motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded quickly by Dr. Dickerson and trustee Bowling. We have an aye. Eyes from trustee Quintanilla?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Dickerson?
Aye.
Trustee Bowling?
Aye.
Trustee Keynes?
Aye.
Vice President Ewing?
Aye.
And I, Robert Triano, vote aye. Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you, District Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.